Counselor, good morning.
Commissioner Winmiller, we're ready. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the Operations Committee of the Bi-State Development Board to order on Friday, March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four, eight thirty a.m. Myra, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Winmiller?
Present.
Commissioner Cox?
Here.
Commissioner Golladay?
Here.
Commissioner Beach?
Here.
Commissioner Simmons?
Present.
Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Gladney?
Present.
Commissioner Moore?
Present.
Commissioner Jackson Jennings? You may proceed.
Thank you. Are there any public comments that were received for the meeting?
Yes, Chair, we received two comments for today's meeting, which were included in your packets for today. Those will also be included in the online meeting minutes as well as the minutes from today's session.
Thank you. Next item is approval of the minutes of the January twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four Operations Committee Open Meeting. Uh, the, the minutes have been provided in your board packets for review. Are there any changes, additions to the me, to the minutes? Hearing none may have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Contract Award for the Public Relations and Communication Services for Gateway Arch and River, and Riverboats. And I believe Tom Curran, uh, Curran has some comments for us.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. This is a proposal to allow the President and CEO to enter into a five-year contract with Osborne and Bar Communications for Public Relations and Communication Services for the Gateway Arch and Riverboats. In September of last year, Bi-State issued a solicitation for qualified firms to submit proposals for the provision of these public relations and communication services, including professional counsel and strategic planning. The goal is to maximize visibility and engagement for the Arch and Riverboats events and programming for a five-year period beginning in spring two thousand and twenty-four. Four proposals were received and reviewed by an evaluation committee consisting of team members from Bi-State's Tourism, Innovation, and Marketing Division, plus one National Park Service representative. The evaluation was based on the experience and the capabilities of the proposer, the experience and skill sets of the specific individuals that are assigned to the project, and the ability to deliver quality work at a low cost and with short lead times. The table on page eleven of your packet shows the cost of technical scoring. And based on the combined overall score, Osborne and Bar Communications is the highest ranking firm. Management is recommending that the Operations Committee recommend to the Board of Commissioners that the President and CEO be authorized to enter into a five-year contract with Osborne and Bar Communications for the provision of public relations and communication services for the Gateway Arch and Riverboats in a not-to-exceed amount of one million, one hundred fifteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. One hundred percent of the funding will be provided through operational funds of the Gateway Arch and Riverboats. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Tom. Are there any questions for, for Mr. Curran?
Uh, just, I see Mr. Ted Zinnman there. Uh, you concur?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I, I'd just like to make a comment. Um, I just think that all the work that's going on down on the, on the riverboat. Um, I took, uh, some seniors from Collinsville down there for a tour, a whole bus of them. And it's really great. And I just, uh, I really hope and, uh, you know, that more people know about, um, you know, the, the, what we do as far as on the Tom Sawyer and the Becky Thatcher, and everybody knows about the Arch, of course, but I think that we really need to continue to tell that story down there to help grow that area in our city because it, it's really good and they, they do a great job. So, um, I'm happy to hear about this communications and this contract.
Thank you. Any other comments? Questions? Hearing none may have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Thank you. Next item on the, the agenda is the Contract Award for Armored Car Services. Again, I would, I would ask Mr. Curran for comments.
Thank you. This is a request for approval of a contract with Loomis Armored U.S. for the provision of armored car services from various Bi-State development facilities to designated financial institutions. In August of last year, Bi-State issued a solicitation for armored car services for the scheduled pickup and delivery of sealed bank deposits of both coins and currency to our contracted financial institution. The solicitation was publicly advertised on Bi-State's iSupply website. And three firms were specifically invited to submit bids for this project. Those armored car service firms were Loomis Armored U.S., Dunbar Armored Security, and Brink's Armored Car Services. Despite this outreach, only one bid was submitted by Loomis Armored U.S. The other two non-responsive firms were contacted. But Brink's was the only other firm that expressed a potential interest in Bi-State's proposal. Brink's told Bi-State that a point of contact would be designated. But after several attempts to communicate with Brink's, no pro, proposal was received. The Loomis proposal was judged to be responsive to the RFP requirements. And the cost per year is shown in the briefing paper on page twelve of the committee packet. Management is recommending that the Operations Committee approve and forward to the Board of Commissioners this request to authorize the President and CEO to enter into a five-year contract with Loomis Armored U.S. LLC for the pickup and delivery of sealed bank deposits in the not-to-exceed amount of seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred forty dollars and sixty-four cents. Funding for this will be provided through the operating budget. And once again, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for, for Tom? Tom, I just have one. Is, is most of this, uh, cash-related issue, um, for the purchase of, of Metro passes?
So this is everything that comes in from Metro Bus that is emptied into the vaults as well as the transfer of cash from TVMs and things of that nature. So it's a lot of coins and cash. Uh, we have an average of two thousand dollars and change at any given time per TVM. So it is a great deal of money that's moving back and forth on a daily basis. Uh, Loomis is the incumbent provider, has been since two thousand and eighteen. That may be the reason why there was less interest from the other, uh, two potential competitors.
And we've had, I'm assuming, good service from them?
Yes, we've had no issues.
Great. Any other questions? Hearing none may have a motion to approve.
So move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is item number seven, the Contract Modification for the Micro Transit Project, the Contract Extension. And, uh, I would ask Chuck Stewart for comments.
Uh, good morning. Thank you, Commissioner. Um, this contract is with VIA. They are providing our micro transit services. We've been contracting with VIA since, uh, two thousand and twenty. It was initially a contract for, um, first mile, last mile kind of services focused on improving our, our service at the far end of our service area. Uh, VIA operates in, um, we have zones. Uh, we have a North County zone at this time, a West County zone, and a South County zone. So they're, at the very ends of our, of our service areas. Um, VIA, the, um, our scope of service from VIA has expanded during this period of time, primarily due to the, um, pandemic and our lack of, uh, operators, which therefore shrink our system. So we needed VIA to fill in more holes, uh, than we initially imagined. So the contract costs have gone up over that period of time. But they have been very nimble. Uh, they have been very effective when we asked them to provide, uh, more, um, wheelchair, wheelchair-equipped vans. They did that. So they've been able to help us out with some of our paratrendy customers. So it's been a, we, although we started with one objective in mind, was we were really brought in as a safety net for us as we experienced the downturn in the pandemic and as we are recovering, uh, from that net. Uh, this contract was scheduled to expire, or it is scheduled to expire in May of this year. Uh, we were intending to go out for a bid on, on another service provider or maybe bring VIA back depending on the bids that we got. But, um, Local Seven Eighty-Eight has expressed interest in providing this work for us. Uh, it's something that we could not work out during the contract period. So what we're asking the Board to do is for, uh, to allow us to extend this contract for one more year uh, at a price not to exceed sixty, six point five million dollars. We're going to use this time to work through a plan, uh, with the participation of Seven Eighty-Eight so that maybe at the end of this period, we can bring this service in house. So that's kind of a method to the madness here. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you may.
There are questions for Chuck? Uh, Chuck, I, I have a couple of questions and, and they might be answered in your operating report later because I was looking at the, the ridership numbers, um, for VIA. And can you please sort of, I, I don't want to prolong the meeting, but I, I want the Commissioners to understand what VIA does in terms of first and last mile and how it operates because it's been a while since we've actually had a conversation about this. And the contract, a, a one-year extension at six point five million is, is considerable investment. So can you please describe what VIA does?
Yeah, it is a considerable investment. We, we understand that, and the contract has grown significantly since inception. Um, our finance budget people have been, uh, putting the, they, they have, they have certainly recognized that and are challenging us to manage within this company. But VIA again operates in these zones. It's, uh, it's a, it's kind of like, um, Uber service. They have their own platform. We call it via ride. Uh, primarily, they were used to provide service, uh, from a home, a pickup point, uh, to a transit center or bus stop or something like that. So it's kind of a, an add-on service and add-on. But because of the, uh, issues we have had in terms of service and, and service reduction, they operate, they will go from point to point within a zone, um, as well as picking up and we want them to focus primarily on pickups and deliveries to transit, uh, operations so that they can then become part of our fixed line service.
So the point, so the point is to have, to increase ridership on transit by providing, uh, some service that for people directly from their home or, or work or wherever to a transit stop, correct? It's not, it's, it's not call ride. It doesn't take people to destinations. It takes them to and from transit stops. Is that correct?
That, that is the objective. Uh, we have, that has been, uh, loosely interpreted over time, and we have been doing point-to-point within zones. But this is not a, not a replacement for call ride by any means, but it is a, a convenience. Again, I'm not, what, what we realize is that even when we, uh, reintroduce, uh, service, there will still be opportunities for providing service to areas where it does not make sense to send a thirty-foot or forty-foot bus. But this is part of our service area, and we still want to provide service to their customer, to those customers.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Terry. I think you had a question.
I'm just curious. Are there income eligibility requirements for the customers?
There is, they, we don't, um, we, the VIA zones are really, are located in areas where there are, are lower-income riders, so that kind of takes care of itself.
Um, so that's the, the presumption is, presumption or, or, is that's the client base that may be lacking a vehicle, privately-owned vehicle? Okay. Thank you.
And what is the cost for the customer to go from, to take a VIA ride to a transit stop or as the la, first or last mile?
Well, you know, actually, the cost is flexible. I think right now it's about four dollars. Uh, we are considering raising that price, uh, as, uh, we bring back our regular service. We don't want to price it out of the, um, out of the market in terms of, of low-income customers. But we don't want it to be abused either, uh, as a substitute for overlit.
Right. Just, just a quick thought, if I am, Madam Chair, um, I, I mean, you don't, maybe, uh, it's a thought, uh, maybe for your thinking. Are, are we moving ourselves into another situation where there will be demands placed on your structure if there's any change in this service? And I, I don't know it well enough to, to, to fully understand it, but it seems like we're going a little outside of the route or whatever, but you're, you're trying to pull people in, but I'm just wondering, are we getting ourselves into a situation that might be problematic a bit down the road if there's any change in this service or is you shrink it or, you know, uh, revenue demands something of it other than what people have become accustomed to? It doesn't sound to be a requirement, but it's something you want to do to try to engage more riders.
It is, it is not a, it is not a requirement. It is not a requirement. Basically, we were looking at it from the standpoint, it's our, our service patterns change as time, you know, which is why we do our quarterly service changes and that type of thing. Um, so this is kind of, we wanted this to be a flexible service such that if patterns change in certain areas where it no longer, we still need to provide service to that area, but it no longer requires a bus, then we have an option to that. VIA operates in vans, these little minivan kind of things. Um, so it, it's an opportunity for us to continue to provide service throughout our service area with the proper equipment for that sake.
So Chuck, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead, Herb.
Uh, Chuck, uh, forgive me if I have, I'm not seeing it. Um, you're asking for the six point five million for the extension of the contract for a year, right?
Yes.
And, and do, do, is there anywhere somewhere in here, how many trips we think that's going to, uh, be?
Well, I can give you, uh, historically what I've tripped in them. Since inception in two thousand and twenty, uh, VIA has provided over four hundred and eighty thousand trips. Uh, in our operations, uh, uh, report for this month, for example, January, it was like twenty-four thousand trips. So we're thinking that on an annual basis, it'll be about two hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay. Thank you.
So, so for reference, Commissioner, it, these ridership numbers are in the Ops Report on page eighteen. Uh, um, so there is a historic, uh, little graph that includes VIA numbers. Uh, the overall, um, success of the first mile, last mile, um, is really in areas where we have less density. In particular, you met, you, you heard reference to a zone in North County and also a, a zone in South County where just by the nature of the densities, it made more sense to try to look at this modified service as opposed to running a thirty- or forty-foot bus. Uh, so the idea being that, although yes, uh, six point, uh, five million is, is a significant amount, but maybe our sunk costs associated with doing a large bus may cost more, for instance, more like eight point five or so on. So we're, we're trying to look at the efficiencies and still feed into the system. Um, and this is, uh, a common, um, first mile, last mile, uh, model that's been used across the country. Um, I, I think it's very interesting, however, that our partners at Seven, Seven Eighty-Eight are also looking at, um, to be sure that, well, maybe we could use our union drivers to fulfill this as well. And we think it's a really interesting idea from those partners. And so always looking at which is more effective is important. And since, um, Commissioner Moore brings up, I think, a very good point with employment. Since, uh, Chuck's team, along with that partnership of Seven Eighty-Eight and along with what, um, this Board has allowed us to do with that new three-year contract as we've moved wage rates up and we've been able to recover from a employment standpoint, we would not be able to look at that otherwise. So, um, it's a, it, it, I think it's important as an agency that we stay flexible and that we see what is the most efficient and cutting-edge idea, that we don't get stuck in ideas from the eighties and nineties, especially in such a dynamic employment environment.
And I'd like to also add, one of the things that, well, Seven Eighty-Eight is looking at this from two ways. One is that they see it as an opportunity for us to start like in a apprenticeship program where you need to be twenty-one to be a bus driver, need CBO, you need all of those things. Well, you can be eighteen and, and drive for, for VIA. So they kind of see it as an opportunity for us to kind of get a, a, a farm team going in terms of future, future operators, and they definitely want, uh, this to be an entry point into being a bus driver or metro and driver or something like that. They also want to use it as an, an opportunity for our existing operators to make extra money. That maybe, uh, you know, you can do, you, it, a lot of the current drivers for VIA, they work part-time. They work their own hours, that kind of thing. We could, they want to have that same kind of structure. So if somebody's not, uh, on duty as Bi-State, that they might take a, a few runs with, uh, with our influence via our internal operation, whatever we end up calling them. So, so we see it as, as a great opportunity for us as well. And we want to use this year, uh, to really explore that and, uh, decide if that doesn't work, then what is our next move in terms of micro transit? Again, this was a pilot project, uh, where we, the final word is not in yet as to how we're actually going to use it, but we want this opportunity to expect to experiment, uh, with the potential opportunities.
So I guess my question would be, Chuck, what are we look to experience over this next year on this extension, the contract that we haven't already done in the previous contract? I mean, six point five million dollars is a, a pricey, uh, tag. So what are we looking to, what else is there in your, uh, scope that you want to see over this next year?
Well, actually, I, I want to see, the six point five million dollars is actually less than we spent last year. So I want to see us wean ourselves, uh, from VIA. We want to be able to provide that kind of service, but at the same time, wean ourselves from them and maybe transition, transition into this relationship with Seven Eighty-Eight. VIA is aware of that. They know that we're extending this, that our intention is to explore, uh, different opportunities. Um, I think they bring a lot to the table in terms of platforms and those kind of things that we may use going forward, um, with our new operations. So we're gonna, we're going to get them to help us learn more about how to operate this service online.
Okay, thank you.
So, so thank you very much, um, for answering all those questions, Chuck. And the, the one thing I would caution is, I'm sure that the, um, capital costs would be significant. Because we, as far as I know, we don't have, um, the smaller buses or vans that would go into, um, you know, more underserved areas. And so I would be cautious about making sure that we take into account overall the, the cost long-term. The other thing I would say is, um, I would like to see data on exactly, or, or at least approximately what the cost per trip is based on the amount of money that we're paying for the service and how that compares to, uh, what, what the cost per passenger on our, our traditional MetroLink and MetroBuses. So if you, at some point, if you can provide that, I would be interested in seeing it.
Well, I can certainly provide more detail on it, but basically, uh, bus service in these areas costs us between twenty and thirty bucks a ride, whereas VIA is costing us about fifteen.
Oh. But that's right now without any capital investment on our part, correct?
Yeah, but all of, all of their capital, we're basically paying for their capital investment. Their rates to us basically include, um, both, you know, their, their direct and MDF costs. So we're kind of covering that.
Right. Any other questions?
Just a statement. I believe they're, they're nationwide. I mean, they provide services in many urban areas and rural areas and it's, it's not unique to our area, VIA as a company. I think they're based in New York City. Okay.
Well, great. Thanks for the information. Um, I need a motion to approve the one-year extension. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Next item, um, Toby, is there any unscheduled business?
I have no unscheduled business.
Uh, then an operations report from Chuck Stewart.
Thank you. Um, I want to talk about our workforce first. Um, things have, as you know, we've been, uh, very successful recently in our hiring and retaining of bus drivers. Uh, thanks to the incentive programs that this Board has approved. Uh, it's a great time to work for Metro. A great time to work for Metro, and I think that our numbers are showing it. I have, uh, I think in your operations report, it's showing that we have about six hundred and fourteen bus, um, operators now. Our budget for this year is six thirty-five, so we're really close to that, but, um, we might have a little budget overage because I'm not stopping my efforts to, uh, continue to attract bus drivers. We have over forty in training right now, and I've got about a hundred in the pipeline. So we do have turnover, so we just have to make sure that we always have enough, uh, drivers to, to fulfill our, um, service obligation. Call ride, uh, we have about a hundred and twenty-seven, uh, call ride operators now. Of course, our, our budget is two hundred and one. Our goal this year, we would be really, really happy if we could get up to about a hundred and eighty. I've got fourteen in training right now. We've made over a hundred offers, offers in the last month, uh, to, at our hiring event. So we see that going along very well as well. Uh, mechanics, we still need about seventy mechanics. I've got I've got seven in training right now. We're focusing our hiring events on, on mechanics and Call-a-Ride operators. We had exclusive events this past month on those. We're continuing our efforts. We're focusing much, much harder on mechanics and Call-a-Ride operators now. The five thousand dollar sign-on bonus is scheduled to expire at the end of this month. And we're going to extend it for a few more weeks. We're going to have a big hiring event on April thirteenth at our North County Transit Center. We're going to, Ted's going to put the word out. We're going to make a big effort to make a big splash at that event. Advertising, that that will be the end of the five thousand dollar bonus and hopefully, and we'll be recruiting for bus operators, mechanics and Call-a-Ride if that's possible. So I'm optimistic about our ability to continue to add to our ranks as we reach the operators and the friends. General Call-a-Ride update. I've made, we have made, the company has made a change in leadership at Call-a-Ride. We have brought in a new general manager. We have brought in additional resources in terms of systems and innovation. We might only want to correct the positions either Call-a-Ride. We want to go to a whole different level in terms of service improvement. We want to do new things. We want to be, do innovative things. We want to do the best that we can in terms of providing service to our, to our disabled community. As you know, we are working on a new contract with our Call-a-Ride operators. It's that close, that close. Few technical things that we're working out. It's finally scheduled for vote next Tuesday. And I think we've got everything in place to make that a successful vote. We have received the report from our ADA consultant, Jess Segovia. What Jess did, he took every, every ADA requirement, every ADA regulation, and he reviewed Call-a-Ride, Bus and MetroLink for compliance with those regulations. And he has given us a report that pretty much outlines the same deficiencies that we've been working on already, but he's also given us great recommendations. And we are creating, our team is creating a compliance and service improvement action plan that my new team at Call-a-Ride will be implementing. And we're hoping that we will see significant improvement in Call-a-Ride in short order as well as improvement in the services that we offer in bus and MetroLink as it relates to ADA accommodations. So it's a, it's a company-wide effort to improve our service performance as it relates to the disabled community. Toby will talk about this a little bit. We are planning stakeholder meetings starting next month. We're going to bring together members of the ADA community and their leadership. We're going to involve them in our processes. We're going to report to them on our progress with telephone systems, with our registration systems, with our subscription plan. We're going to involve them on the steps we've taken in terms of this compliance and service improvement action plan. So we're looking forward to that as we move forward. And of course, we will continue to keep this board informed of our progress as well. So I'm going to stop there in terms of my operations report. And I'd be glad to answer any other questions that you may have.
Any questions or comments?
Okay.
I see. Seeing none, thank you so much for your good work. I hope things continue to go well.
We're working hard.
The next item on the agenda is a president/CEO report. Toby, do you have anything for us?
Yes, just, just very briefly. As Chuck just mentioned, we, we want to go that extra effort towards our Call-a-Ride improvement. So you've seen our monthly updates that we will continue to do on the progress and what are the actions that we are taking towards these improvements. We will continue those that we send out not only to the board, but also our community partners. But as an extra step, we're also going to do four public meetings in the, in the month of April. That'll include both a city location, county location, also an online public meeting so that we're trying to be very thorough with the accessibility and getting out into the community and, and talking just about what are the things that we are doing and what are the things that we can do to improve. And part of this is being sure that our system, not just Call-a-Ride, including MetroBus and MetroLink, is welcoming to our partners in the ADA community. You know, part of that is we need to see what is the customer service aspect that we need to improve on. And we need to do that partly by employing consultants like Mr. Segovia, who did an excellent and thorough job, but also by listening to what the public is asking for. So I just wanted to let the Board of Commissioners know of these upcoming meetings. I will, I will send that out additionally on email if, if any of you care to attend. But we're looking forward to those meetings and we need to continue those conversations. And they've been very, and, and that, that'll be in addition to the existing meetings that we already have on a monthly basis. And for instance, the, the memos that we are putting out on our progress. So I just wanted to highlight that piece. Also, just to let everybody know, we're working very hard on the Green Line extension. That is, is moving along expeditiously. And we're trying to put that contract together to be as competitive as possible for federal funding. But as we move into the next several months, the biggest piece that we need to do is get an idea of how to present the project better to the public. Get a vision of what, of what this extension will look like, how it will affect our streetscape. What is the public's opinion of the, of the stations, et cetera? We need to move into a much more rigorous public aspect of the presentation of the project, and that'll certainly be happening in the next few months. So I'm just very excited about that now that we are moving step-by-step through approval process and making our application competitive. But presentation to the public is our next very large hurdle. And we need to get into these neighborhoods and communities and talk more thoroughly about how this project looks. That includes the Board of Commissioners. And one thing that I would like to do is, is do more, I ask a lot of you. Thank you very much for your time and dedication, but it, but I do need to make a good presentation to you about that project so that as commissioners, you can help us in the advocacy of these very important expansions and also give us some critiques about what are the things that we may not be seeing? What are the things that, where you think that the community could benefit from some different thinking on that project? So I will be asking for maybe a time to give that presentation. I have a nice little slide deck that we can talk about and go over and then solicit your opinion on. So that date is yet to be determined, but I think it would be worthwhile for us to pursue. And that's it. Thank you, Chair Winmiller.
Thanks, Toby. We look forward to hearing more about the Green Line, including the, the various stops and some kind of actual ability to potentially at least drive, you know, be in a situation where we could actually ride the route. So I think that concludes our meeting. I will say that we don't have anything for executive session except approval of the, the minutes from the executive session on January twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, the Operations Committee. So if there are no, those were provided to you in your packet. If there are no corrections to these minutes and no discussion is needed on the minutes, the committee can proceed to a vote without going into executive session. If the, if we, if we choose not to, I would need a motion to approve the minutes of the January twenty-six, twenty twenty-four Operations Committee Executive Session as presented as a closed record. Is there a motion?
I support move. Second.
Thank you. Myra, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Golladay.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney.
Yes.
Commissioner Beach.
Yes.
Commissioner Cox.
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons.
Yes.
And Commissioner Winmiller.
Hi.
The motion passed.
Thank you so much. If there's no further business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you so much. And we have a financial committee right after this. But so I imagine I'll see you all in a few minutes.
Commissioner Beach, whenever you're ready, we can begin.
Thank you. We'll call the Audit Finance Administration Committee meeting to order. Myra Bennett, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Beach.
Here.
Commissioner Simmons.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Gladney.
Present.
Commissioner Moore.
Present.
Commissioner Winmiller.
Present.
Commissioner Cox.
Here.
Commissioner Golladay.
Here.
Commissioner Jackson Jennings. You may proceed.
Thank you. Were there any comment cards for this committee meeting?
No, there were no speaker cards presented.
Thank you. In your packet, in Board of Fact, you will find the minutes from the previous meeting, committee meeting of January twenty-sixth. If there are no changes or comments, a motion to approve those minutes from the Jan, January twenty-sixth, AFA Committee would be in order.
A move.
Second.
We have a motion to second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Minutes were approved. Item number five, approval of the open minutes, meeting minutes of the March fifteenth meeting were also provided. And a motion to approve would be in order.
A move.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to second to approve the March fifteenth committee minutes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it moving along. Agenda item six, participation in the seven ninety-one purchasing cooperative. Tom Kern, you are up.
Thank you. This is a proposal to allow Bi-State to join the seven ninety-one purchasing cooperative in order to take advantage of contracts bid by the cooperative to save time and money while still satisfying our competitive bid policies. Bi-State's collected board policies do not contain any provisions regarding the approval that's necessary to join an intergovernmental purchasing cooperative, but best business practices dictate that the agreement should be approved by the Board of Commissioners. Also, Missouri statutes require that agreements between municipalities or other units of government shall be approved by the governing board of such entities. The U.S. Code of Federal Regulations encourages federally funded entities to enter into intergovernmental agreements where appropriate for the procurement of common goods and services. The seven ninety-one purchasing cooperative is a government purchasing group that serves public agencies in all fifty states. It is named after Texas Government Code seven ninety-one, the local, the Interlocal Cooperation Act. The purchasing cooperative nationally solicits, evaluates and awards contracts through a competitive bidding process on behalf of all its members. If Bi-State does join the seven ninety-one purchasing cooperative, any competitive negotiation procurement that exceeds five hundred thousand dollars in cost would still require Board of Commissioners approval. There is no fee to join the seven ninety-one purchasing cooperative. Management is recommending that the Audit Finance and Administration Committee approve and forward to the Board of Commissioners for final approval this request to authorize the president and CEO or his designee to join the seven ninety-one purchasing cooperative on behalf of Bi-State Development. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions for Tom? Hearing none, a motion to approve would be in order, please.
A move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Any abstain, anyone abstaining? It is approved. Moving along, item seven, board policies. There's been a comprehensive review and revisions to the board policies. And our general counsel, Greg, is present, I believe.
Yes, Commissioner Beach.
You are up.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here to present to you today a comprehensive review of our board policies as tasked by the board and the president to ensure that they include the latest statutory and regulatory updates and reflect the current practices of the agency. These revisions, unless otherwise noted, do not create substantive changes to agency practice or procedure and are in the nature of revisory amendments. There are, however, some substantive amendments specifically to Chapter ten and Chapter eighty. And I will describe those in, in brief and then happy to answer any questions in greater detail to the extent that you want to get into any of these chapters. Specifically, Chapter ten is amended to ensure that our practices relating to remote meetings are codified. This has been our standard practice for some time, but there were some references that needed to be clarified in Chapter ten to ensure that our remote meeting practices meet with board policy. There are also two new provisions added that are consistent with procedures and standards in several other Board of Directors' policies and our standard practice within this board but aren't currently codified. One being that the chair is the authorized speaker for the board. And another is a censure provision to state that board members who do not follow policies or engage in unethical behavior as board members are subject to censure. There is a more complete list of those amendments to Chapter ten. Should you wish me to go over them, I can do that. Board policy, Chapter twenty is amended to clarify that the president/CEO is the authorized signatory for the agency and to codify current journaling procedures of votes. Chapter thirty is amended to clarify the Audit and Finance Committee's role in reviewing the chief audit executive and changes the name of a standard auditing practice. Chapter forty and Chapter one thirty are, should be considered together. They are amended to delete duplicative language that exists in both chapters and to refer properly our general real estate processes back to Chapter forty where those belong and to the extent that Chapter one thirty conflicts with that to ensure that board policy states that the more specific provisions regarding the airport control in Chapter one thirty. Chapter seventy, personnel, is updated to eliminate references to specific employee policies related to personnel decisions and to ensure that the agency maintains those policies in its employee handbook so that they can be more readily amended more quickly as needs dictate. There's also several named positions within the chapter, which we have amended to better reflect current agency personnel titles. There's also been extensive revisions to FTA drug and alcohol, FTA-driven drug and alcohol policies that we needed to update to comply with federal regulations. Chapter eighty does have substantive amendments. There is an amendment to authorize activation of an allowed marketing practice. There's also suggested changes to our advertising ban on ads that are predatory in nature, which we have defined as marketing products to certain population by using aggressive, emotional or misleading and pervasive advertising strategies. Then we also have included a specific ban. We currently have bans on smoking, but bans on vaping and marijuana products were not specifically included. We've added those. And we've added a firearms advertisement ban. And we've also amended in Chapter eighty to eliminate the designed minimum advertising purchases language in board policy. And I have directed the vice president of Community Marketing Communications to create an internal policy that can thus be readily updated more frequently. Chapter one ten changes the name of, ads the name of a specific company that can do uh, analysis for us. Standard and pores and the like, one of those company names was added. Chapter one thirty, I've already referenced, has been amended to be consistent with chapter forty. Um, these amendments are very extensive and I'm happy to go into any more of them in greater detail that you would wish to go into.
Thank you.
Terry, I got a question.
Yeah, whoever that, whoever just spoke, go ahead.
Uh, Greg, under, uh, section one thirty, uh, point, uh, zero three thirty, airport rates, fees, and charges, is that a statutory requirement that that gets changed or is that just best policy? Where it's, uh, the Board of Commissioners and you've got that strike that?
Yes, about approving the rates on an annual basis.
Right.
Go ahead. That is, that has not been standard practice, uh, for some time is my understanding, so I'm, what I'm doing is adopting what our current practices is, that the airport director sets those rates and then can report them to the board at any time so that they can be updated more readily. Um, that is not an Illinois statutory practice or a federal regulatory practice, it is just a board policy is my understanding, and so we're just attempting to be more efficient, we're certainly willing and ready to transparently talk about those fees anytime the board wants to, but this just enables the director to authorize those changes, which is current practice, it's just not the way the board policy reads.
So if the airport director sets the policy, d- does that still come in front of the board for their approval?
It currently does not. I mean, but the policies, go ahead, go ahead.
I think she will, she will be noted. I serve on the Mid-America Airport Board and Deborah's more, Commissioner Moore serves on the Lambert Board. And, uh, traditionally, the AAA, American Association of Airport Executives kind of rule is, uh, half and half. Uh, some airport directors with their staff set rates and, uh, report those to their governing boards. Some are approved by the governing boards. I don't think this is a, a significant issue to, to, to to argue over in other, as long as she, our airport director, reports to us on an annual basis, any substantial increases to the rates. And, and I think airport directors know that if you sit rates too high, you lose business. With a couple of corporate jets and whatnot, so. Um, to other airports in the region, so I, I don't think it's a big, uh, a big, that big of a deal. Personally.
And just to reiterate, sorry, go ahead.
Her- Herbie, that answer your question?
Yeah, I'm just, uh, I'm just not, uh, sure that, uh, uh, just speaking for myself, I mean, I, I, I want to know when these rates are going to change and, uh, I'd like to just know that the Commissioners have, uh, knowledge of these things, I mean, uh, if we just give our directors carte blanche and, I mean, and I, I want to trust their opinion, but, uh, I, I've been in situations where, uh, when the harsh gets out of the gate, it's hard to put it back in sometimes.
Mr. Roach, I, uh, would request that, um, we just kind of work this out where there are those lines of communication between uh, the airport director, uh, Ms. Lammy as well, and you, uh, keep us informed if any changes to the rates take place.
Yeah, uh, more than happy to do that, uh, essentially we are doing this in practice right now.
Anyway, right.
Yes, so.
As you said, we're just kind of cleaning up the board uh, policy, how it's written currently.
Correct.
Hey, uh, question, um, what does the statute say about, uh, the meetings in person? I mean, I know that, um, when COVID hit, all boards, uh, went to this, you know, the Zoom, um, and me personally, uh, I think that it's, you know, it's, it's more productive. I know it's a lot more, um, i- it's easier for all of us just to, to log on, but I, I feel that it's so much more productive to be in person. It gives also the appearance for people to come speak to the board in person. Um, but, and I'm not aware of any board, especially of this size or agency that doesn't have to meet in person, so I was just curious what the statute was and then any of your guys' um, the board's opinion on that.
I can speak to the statute and of course the board speak to their opinions on it, of course, but i- interestingly, the, the initial authorization of, uh, Bi-State as an entity does authorize remote meetings, but the board policies underlying that have never specified how that works. Um, so there has been since the founding and allowance for remote meetings, and at that time it would have been teleconferences or what have you, I would assume, but the policies, um, were not clear on how that was to be done. And what has been done in chapter ten throughout in these amendments that I've written is to allow the option, it's not a requirement either direction, but it clarifies essentially, as I've been saying through all these, it clarifies our current operating practice and makes that allowable under board policy or clarifies that we are operating consistently with the underlying statute. Um, it doesn't dictate any direction as to how we would do that, that's a board decision and you would still have that ability should you choose to do so. It just merely authorizes, this policy merely authorizes what we're doing right now.
And if I can make one comment on that, uh, Terry? Um, so, uh, there are many more boards, uh, including the County Council, including the Board of Aldermen. Um, not as aware of Illinois boards right now that are still doing hybrid type meetings, okay? Uh, where even Commissioners or Alderpeople are, uh, may be in person and may also be on Zoom. Um, so, uh, so I do know of several boards and participate in several of those meetings where that activity is still going. One of the benefits is actually to, and we've heard this from the ADA community, that because of the ease of hybrid type meetings, that there actually is more access to the machinations of, of board discussions, and so it's kind of a positive externality that I think we've seen as a result of this new dynamic. I will also offer to the Board of Commissioners that one of the reasons why you see us here in this kind of strange hybrid, um, is that we can offer the ability where, for instance, we have a mode where Commissioners are indeed still on a Zoom environment, but we could host, uh, a public comment in this very room, uh, that's why the camera system has been done so that when we were to make that decision or when you as the board would make that decision to make that available, we could offer that, okay, uh, in addition to the email comments. Um, so we're trying to, I guess, accommodate all sides of a really dynamic situation. Um, we do, uh, and, and getting board participation with quorums. Uh, I do, I want to be very cognizant that we demand a lot of time of this Board of Commissioners. Uh, many, many meetings, um, quorums can be difficult sometimes in your busy schedules, and so therefore I think, um, uh, the hybrid meeting, uh, helps that quite a bit. But staff will always be here and we will be able to offer that to the public should the board decide. Um, so I, I think that we have some good options to discuss. Um, and, uh, in a, in a really kind of dynamic environment.
Commissioner Cox, if you, you asked for board member input, I, I'll give you my thoughts on it at least, um, I, I like this change in the policy and that it still gives us the option to go in for meetings, I, I do remember, you know, a couple of years ago, Commissioners Zimmerman, I think, used to be at quite a few of them. Um, that's a, that's a practice I'd like to start personally taking up, not speaking for anybody else's schedule. You know, it gets difficult because I've got two kids to drop off at daycare, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna make the effort and, and start coming in for some of those meetings personally, and if you would like to as well. Um, I, I'd like to join you in that, but I, I understand from Talby and, and this board policy allows it, but that option is still there for us. I also understand one of the difficulties between our commission and some of the other elected commissions is frankly, we have a bigger geographical area, I mean, we have a, a river that separates us and a, a, a bridge that can be a pain to get over at eight in the morning. So, um, I, it, it, I, I think it is a good goal, um, have some of us try to be in there when we can, but with the form responsibilities, just the amount of distance that we have separating us for an eight-thirty meeting, I think it can be more difficult, but I totally agree, I would, I would like to be in more meetings. And I'll just take that responsibility myself, not on anybody else.
Yeah, I, I just feel that it, I don't know, I just feel like that, um, ma- maybe I'm wrong, but the, the, the board, it was more engaging when you're there, and I really do believe that personally, that we should open it up to the public to come in and make comments personally, because as you guys have all seen, I mean, sometimes we'll have fifty comment cards and then, uh, it's led to problems, um, with the caller ID and stuff that, um, you know, maybe if we're, we're seeing this in person, it doesn't get to that point. Um, and just for, um, all full transparency, I met with Talby and I even said, you know, I brought this up, that I thought that this board should be meeting in person and, uh, you know, I know it's, it's a hassle, it's, it's, you know, it's a more of a burden for everybody to get in there and this is one of the only boards too that's unpaid, I said, is there a stipend for travel or something that, that Bi-State could offer? Um, and I think he looked into that and he, he sent me the, the statute. Um, and I'm not sure exactly what, what that decision was then Talby, if that was offered, um, or not.
Uh, yeah, so I asked, uh, Greg to research it and, and we forwarded that statute because I wanted to, uh, fulfill the, my obligation to, to what, what it, and, and I'm in a difficult situation because you all set the policy, so I need to be sure to tell you what the policy is and then, you know, you're my bosses technically, so, so I, I want to be in a, give that advisory role and tell you where it is, tell you where we recommend. Um, we also are, uh, and, and so to shift gears, so, so Greg did look into the stipend issue and it is not allowed under our current board, board policy, really essentially whatsoever. We would have to change policy significantly in order to do that. Um, and that may even involve, uh, federal change, uh, because our original legislation is a, is a federal compact, so making it extremely complicated. Um, shifting gears to the public forum basis, um, we also have to, uh, there is a balance, um, and I think that the emails are very effective and, and helpful, they're informative. Um, but there's a balance doing the business of a, you know, roughly four hundred million dollar operating agreement with tens of thousands of rides on both sides of the river. Um, and we, it is our job as staff to deal with normal customer complaints. Even if we do everything perfectly, there will be, um, significant complaints that and, and compliments that are our job to deal with. And if we were to bog the board down with unlimited public comment, I'm just going to tell you, Commissioner, there's no way we'd get through a meeting. Absolutely no way. Um, I already, uh, feel guilty sometimes when I drag you all through uh, significant meetings and decisions that take up two hours of your time. Um, so it's our job as staff to try to create the most efficient way, um, that is also cognizant of the very important ethic of, uh, getting public input to our process. So, um, I do think that we are striking a pretty positive balance. Um, and, uh, we will continue to do so and, and I, I send you, uh, email updates on, uh, that we send out to not only the Board of Commissioners but to a, a wide variety of, of stakeholders, uh, which includes, for instance, on the, on the color guide and so on and where we're going. Um, and I think that as a, as a staff, we've been pretty responsive, but striking that balance is very, very important. Um, and I know that, uh, you know, these are significant meetings and, and they take quite a long time and we need to figure out how do we manage an organization of, of this size.
And I don't say that anybody's doing anything wrong, just, just to be clear, I was just thinking it was maybe look and appearance for the board, lastly, just real quick. One of my personal things that, that worries me, I haven't been to, in that boardroom now for four years, is our cards and hopefully everybody has one, um, and you have to use that for the elevator to get up. Um, will they still work?
Works, I was there with Chairman Kern for a meeting at Greater St. Losink a week or so ago and we came down uh, to visit with the executive staff and I gave Chairman Kern a tour. Worked on the elevator, worked in, to go in the executive offices and worked to get into the boardroom, so.
Cause I was, I was, I haven't been there in four years, so mine will work then still.
And I, you know, this, I will say this and then we'll move on, but, um, uh, thank you Greg for all the work you put on this, um. I, I do like the hybrid system myself, uh, and I will venture make a, an effort to come in more often to sit in on the meetings rather than, uh, sit here at home, but, uh, I do like the hybrid format. Uh, this committee, the Audit Finance Administration Committee has a full agenda all the time. As you can tell by the items that we discuss and approve and hear information about, but if there's a reporter listening right now, I guarantee you the only thing that's going to be mentioned if there's a story that comes out of this is that Commissioner Cox of Bassin County wants to be paid, wants a salary to serve on this board, and I think most of us don't serve on this to be paid. But that's how it's going to come across, uh, Derek.
Uh, that's unfair for you to say that, because that's not what I was, and, and Herb can back me up. It's, it, I said, i- it would be a stipend for travel if we came in, if that was a burden, if that was what's holding back. I've been on this board far longer than you, Terry, and that's not what I'm looking for at all. And I don't think any of our Commissioners are looking for that, so that's unfair for you to try to put me in that light, that I'm looking for a salary. Give me a break.
Well, that's how it comes across.
Give me a break, that's, that's rude for you to say.
Oh.
I came in there just a few weeks ago and spent all day tack like that I'm in here just for a salary, for you to say that, that's, it's, it's uncalled for.
Well.
We're all here volunteering because we care.
There's your, there's your thirty-second clip. Uh, any other questions concerning this agenda item?
Uh, I, I just wanted to make a comment, I, I, I'm just speaking for myself personally, I have always felt like it once, um, the COVID restrictions were lifted and, and people were, you know, either working hybridly or um, back in their office, I always felt like it was up to us as board members individually to make the decision about whether or not to appear in public i- in the, at the board, um, you know, at Bi-State's offices or online. I'm comfortable with either and I like the fact, since we're talking about changes in board policy, I like the fact that it's codified now a- and that each board member should feel comfortable doing what is best for them and best for their role and best for the public.
I agree. And I also like the, like the fact that we are codifying more clearly the role of the chairman is the only speaker of the board and that, uh, Commissioners may not discuss confidential items with reporters, which is the gist of what that issue is about as well. That's another concern of mine that I'm glad is being cleared up. Any other questions or comments? Let's see, that, uh, we do need a motion to approve these changes, uh, and I would entertain one at this time.
I so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is a voice vote sufficient?
Yes, it is.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Thank you, moving right along. Item eight, financial statements, and item nine, treasures report, Tammy Fulbright, information only.
Good morning, thank you, um, I will give the results for the December, um, financials. So for transit, income before depreciation was a loss of fifteen point eight million and is covered by de-federalized COVID relief funds. Um, as you remember, all COVID relief funds were brought in last fiscal year and so that's going to make our financial statements look a bit unusual this year. I just want to note a couple of items for revenue, um, our passenger revenue is down compared to budget, almost two million. Um, also, St. Louis County is using allocated de-federalized funds to cover a portion of their funding in the current year and our interest income is approximately six point two million more than our year-to-date budget. Um, our revenue is offset then by savings and operating expenses of eleven point three million. And then looking at executive services, year-to-date income was two point six million and this income is the result of the administrative fees and interest income. For the Gateway Arch, year-to-date income was approximately two million and rider ships up approximately twenty-seven and rider ships up approximately twenty seven thousand riders from the prior year at this time. So it's about a seven point seven percent increase. For the Riverboats, year-to-date income before depreciation was six hundred and ninety two thousand and we've had forty nine more cruises than the prior year with six thousand more passengers. So our total expenses were three hundred and seventy one thousand dollars under budget, inclusive of two hundred thousand in wages and benefits. For the airport, year-to-date loss before depreciation was minimal at twenty one thousand. And for Freeway, year-to-date income was forty one thousand and this is primarily due to timing of the revenue receipts. And to quickly recap, our treasury position at December thirty first, by-state directed funds were four hundred and seventy eight million with an average rate of return of five point zero five percent. And by-state trustee-directed funds were fifty million with the same average rate of return at five point zero five percent. For the fuel hedge through December thirty first, we had realized gains of seven hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. And our year-to-date cost of fuel per gallon with the hedge is two dollars and thirty nine cents per gallon compared to a budget of two dollars and eighty eight cents, a difference of about fifty cents. So overall, our financial results are really good at December and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions about that? Thank you. Next item would be Crystal Mesner is up for Treasury Safekeeping Quarterly Review. This is also information only. Crystal?
Morning commissioners. Internal audit determined that the treasury's safekeeping accounts existed in their perspective balances, credit ratings and fuel hedging was fairly stated in the treasurer report that Ms. Fulbright just presented to the committee. Collateral posted by PNC Bank in conjunction, conjunction with FDIC insurance was sufficiently adequate to collateralize BSD deposits at the lead bank, PNC. This is presented for informational purposes only and I am available for any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Crystal?
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving along, the procurement report, Tom Kern, you're up.
Thank you. The procurement report begins on page two hundred and eleven of your packet. Please note that due to the timing of this month's meeting, all third quarter reports are preliminary. There's still more than one week left in the third quarter of fiscal year 2024. So you'll see the final third quarter reports presented at the May AFA committee meeting. The first report is a preliminary non-competitive procurement trend for the third quarter of fiscal year 2024. Non-competitive procurements for the quarter totaled approximately five point two million dollars or just one point two percent of the total purchase order volume of four hundred and nineteen million. Because the contract for our new light rail vehicles posted in this quarter, there is an exceptionally large amount of spending accounted for in this report that's greater than any report in the past ten years. As a result, the rolling ten-month average of non-competitive procurements has dropped to only three point four percent of the total procurement spending in the past year. The second report is a preliminary procurement card transactions for the third quarter. There have been one thousand nine hundred and five procurement card transactions so far, totaling about seven hundred and thirty six thousand dollars or on average, three hundred and eighty six dollars per transaction. And there have been no confirmed procedural violations yet during the third quarter. The third report is a preliminary list of contracts over a hundred thousand dollars. The largest of these was three hundred and ninety point four million dollars for new light rail vehicles. It should be noted that these vehicles will be paid for over several years, even though the expense report is reported in its entirety this quarter. And then the final component of the procurement report is a preliminary contract modifications report. The modifications involve service additions to existing contracts and the exercise of option years on previously approved contracts. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the procurement report.
Thank you, Tom. Are there any questions for Tom? Thank you. Moving along, item twelve, pension plans, 401K retirement savings program and other post-employment benefit trust investment performance update as of December thirty first of last year. Carmen Brothers, you are up.
Good morning commissioners. I'm here to present an informational update under agenda item twelve for our defined pension, our defined contribution and other post-employee benefits. This update is as of December twenty twenty three. I was started with the 401K plan, which had assets of ninety point seven million as of December, which is up by eighteen million in contribution and investment earnings with ten million of that being combined employer and employee contributions. Next, I will highlight the salary pension plan, which ended December thirty first with assets of one hundred point nine million with total investment gains of eight million. Q four was slightly negative at oh point eight million. The IBW pension plan ended fiscal year twenty twenty three with seven point five million in assets with total investment gains of oh point six million. We continue to rebalance the investment portfolio to reduce, as this is a mature closed pension plan. The ATU pension plan ended fiscal year twenty twenty three with one hundred seventy point seven million in half assets with total investment gains of thirteen point three million. There continues to be negative cash flows due to the number of participants in pay status. And finally, the OCAF trust ended with fiscal year twenty twenty three assets as of sixty five point eight million with total investment gains of nine million. All performance updates were included as exhibits in your board package. And with that, I will entertain any questions you all may have.
Thank you, Carmen. Any questions? Thank you. Talby, item thirteen, unscheduled business, item fourteen, your report, what do you have?
I think we've talked about enough commissioners, so I have nothing additional to report in either item.
In that case, Mara Bennett, upcoming board and committee meeting dates. For our community and operations committee too, if you want to mention that.
The next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held on Friday, April nineteenth. The next Safety and Security Committee meeting will be held on Thursday, May ninth. The next Operations Committee meeting, as well as the next Audit, Finance and Administration Committee are scheduled to be held on Thursday, May twenty third. All of the meetings will, will begin at eight thirty AM.
Thank you. I need a motion at this time that the committee go in executive session for the purpose of discussing legal, confidential or privileged matters as permitted under by-state development board policy, chapter ten, section ten point zero eight zero D one legal and D ten auditors. I need a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and second roll call, please.
Commissioner Windmiller?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Galladay?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney? Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
And Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
The motion passed.